I've called meeting to order. Thank you for coming. The rise from the Pleasant Legion.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, the true republic of British standards, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and the home of
Good morning. Thank you for joining us for our monthly work session there. We will have a roll call, please.
Supervisor Hill.
Here.
Treasurer Anderson.
Yes.
Trustee Abey.
Here.
Trustee Ossling.
Here.
Clerk Squire.
Here.
Very good. Thank you. Item number one is comments on the agenda items only. You'll see on the agenda, we have thirteen items on the agenda. Several of them are just, when I say just, they're monthly board reports. Anybody have any public comments on the agenda items at this time? Okay, not seeing any or hearing any, seeing any on Zoom at all. We'll continue on. Item number one, building and zoning, the board, you, as we, as I've stated now, the last month or two here, you all have your copies of that here. And so Jason is not present with us so that he can continue to work on that. So we're acknowledging that written report, the board has no questions to take back to Jason at all. No? Okay. Moving along to the Marina, Russ Hartner. Also, he did supply his Marina manager report. The only comments on it is you can see that we're still running slightly behind last year. So we'll hope for a good August to maybe help get a recovery here. I mean, it's not not breathtaking, but it's still by percentage down in each category appears. So anybody have any questions on that board?
You know, the only thing I would comment is that, you know, even though these, he's, he's only showing fuel sales in there. And yeah, they are down, but you're only losing the profit from that.
Correct.
And the, the cost of the sales for the slips are set amount per year. So we're not losing out.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And the net sales, the same thing. So, so I mean, it's, I call it rather negligible. But, you know, let's, let's hope for better. And obviously their projects, they're, they're working on their barge. They were repairing upgrades for the fall hoist removal, which is good to hear. And then they're disposable miscellaneous scrap metals from the buildings, which is probably long overdue. So that's perfect. Number three, Police Department, Chief Maschinsky, I see from the report, you look like you have two items that you need the boards to address, and I'd like you to come on up.
Good morning.
Morning.
Just had you jump to number seven there. This month I received a resignation letter from Lieutenant Labani, who was formerly resigned from the Garris Township Police Department. His last day noted as August eighth, which is actually tomorrow. He has accepted a police officer position with the VA Hospital down in Detroit, Michigan. I'd like to thank Norm for his many years of service with Garris Township and wish him luck on his new endeavor. And I've attached a copy of the letter there for that. So just like to get that on the agenda for Tuesday night.
Okay, very good.
Approve that. And then I will, I will just like to point out number eight also really quick. He did provide me a letter for payout on his vacation time, which I have a separate letter ready for the clerk's office for that. So that will be coming. And then number nine, with the resignation of Lieutenant Labani, would like to get the board's approval to fill the vacant position now left as lieutenant. And I'd like to post that both internally and externally to get the best possible candidate for that position. So I'm looking for that for, on the agenda at Tuesday's regular board meeting also.
Um, just a quick question, curiosity, where do you? Where do you, you say externally, just where do you guys go with that? Like?
Well, external can, could come from a different department or agency.
That's why I'm saying, you know, how do you go about advertising that? Do you advertise that in some fashion or?
Yeah, we have our social media platforms that we posted on and we are, we have a flyer made up that we're going to put out there.
Okay.
Accepting that, basically posting, accepting the applications for lieutenant position with Garris Township Police Department.
You can even reach them, ACP, they have a, an ad if you want to go that far out, but that probably would be the secondary, if you don't get acceptable candidates pretty today, but, but yes. Yeah. She's questioning, are you going to put it in the whole Lake Resort or?
No, no, I was thinking indeed, or you know, like what is their platform for that type of a
Gotcha.
A career job. I don't know.
I mean, with social media in today's world, you know, we put it on Facebook, which gets shared and spread around quite well that way. The thing with the other platforms, like a lot of them you have to pay for. So we don't normally do that. But I'm, I'm confident that we should get a good qualified candidate.
Okay, very good. Board, any other questions of Chief Maschinsky? I know he has a conflicting meeting a little bit later, right?
Yeah, I might have to squeed out about 11:00 if the meeting's still going.
Well, hopefully we can move.
Hopefully, hopefully not, right?
Right.
Sounds good.
Um, I would like to just say one more thing. This Saturday, August ninth is our annual act now golf outing.
Yep.
We have nineteen teams. It's at Redwood. It looks like the weather is going to be great. You know, we're always looking for volunteers and stuff. So if anybody would like to come out and participate or even just come out and hang out and have a nice day, we'll be doing that. So.
Perfect. Sounds good. Thank you. I'll be there all day. And I think Clerk Squires was gonna do eight thirty to ten o'clock for the fifty fifties and whatever to help out.
Yeah, no, appreciate it.
Fantastic.
Any other questions?
Thank you. None.
All right.
Very good. Thank you, Chief. Fire and EMS. Brandon, do you have something to tell us?
Quick thing to highlight and then one thing for it.
Get the mic on there.
There you go.
Green.
All right. Now it is. You hear me? Just two quick things just to highlight for the month of July, just to point out, we had eighteen calls outside of the township. So our call volume has been picking up that we're covering for other people again quite a bit. Horton Lake and Denton are both down one rig pretty frequently right now. So they only have one truck that they're staffing. So we've been down into Horton Lake. We've been up into Northern Osconville County and Southern. So just so the board is aware of that, we haven't dropped any of our calls, but we are covering for everyone else again. Um, Horton Lake has a contract with Lyon. And so with them being down a truck, we have been over there more. So, yes. And then we were in the state park for two days. It was the Fourth of July and we had twenty-five patient contacts while we were in there. Nothing real serious. We had some injuries and other alcohol related incidents, but it had twenty-five contacts inside the park there while we were there. The other item that we'd like to have board approval on and motion on for Tuesday night, please, we're requesting a board approval to hire Douglas Hedrick for paid-on-call firefighter pending physical and drug screening. Doug has twelve years of experience with a paid-on-call fire department downstate. And him and his wife have recently moved to the area here. So.
Can you give me the name again?
Yes, sir. It's Douglas, D-O-U-G-L-A-S, Hedrick, H-E-D-R-I-C-K.
And has this person, I mean, you're going to ask for permission. Obviously you want, it'll be pending the, the usual background and documentation, physical, drug test, whatever.
Correct. Yes, sir.
That just helps me when I'm writing a motion. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. So that's for Tuesday. All right. Very good. Is there anything else, sir?
No, sir.
Okay, the board, any questions for, the only question that I have is not to open Pandora's box, but are we doing, what, is there anything we can do about the amount of time that we're spending, obviously eighteen calls this quarter back? And, and although we're, you're managing, shall I say managing, I call that keeping your head above water. Is there any discussions going on about how, how this is going to, the, the community of EMS is going to solve this issue?
There's, um, not directly. Indirectly, there's some behind the scenes communication going on.
All right. Nothing that's. So it is on a radar screen.
Yes, sir.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thanks, Brandon.
Thank you, Brandon. Number five, a Glua dissolution update from the Garris Township Board perspective. We are no further than we were thirty days ago. That, from when it works, at least thirty day, whenever it met last for Glua, seems to still be hung up, the board itself. That board seems to be hung up on where do they send the remaining proceeds that are in the Garris Lyon Utility Authority account? The rest of the items that our board had asked have all been handled to the best of my knowledge. And so that's where we sit today. I'm hoping that the Glua Board will meet and continue to, I guess somehow come to a resolution of where this goes. It's, it's coming down to the, to, to where, you know, we have all talked about it and I guess individually. And it's very frustrating to have our Health of Higgins Lake movement going on. There's a lot of people, I shouldn't say a lot, there's, there's some discussion that we constantly keep repelling about that, that we would like to keep this open so that we can turn around and do a sewer all over again right away. It's like a bait switch, if you will. And there's been no intent on this board's part. So the longer that we continue with that situation, I, I, I continue to be perplexed and I don't understand it. And so I'm going to leave it at that. Does there any other board member wish to comment about that, that issue?
I have the same feeling. Same feelings.
All right, very good.
Absolutely. That's, I'll just leave it at that too.
Yep.
Straining.
It, it's, yeah, it, it's, it's, it's frustrating, but we, we are committed to getting this to a closure and, and no matter what it takes. And so we'll move on. Number six, Parks and Records Recreation Report. Susan had sent that over. I see she's on Zoom here today. And you all have this. Susan, is there any in particular things that you might need for Tuesday night?
No, there's not. And I can see and hear you guys, but I can't make my video work. I, I do just want to mention, I had difficulty signing into the Zoom meeting today. It made me go through additional hoops that I never had to do before, and I had to sign in with my personal Zoom account. And it seems that when I try to get this video on, it says you cannot start your video because it is disabled by the host. So it's just a very different experience I had logging in this morning than I've ever had in the past. So.
Thank you for that. Looking over.
You can do that.
Okay, thank you for that. I'm looking over at Mike. He's shaking his head. So he's got the information there. We can see your picture.
You, no, you, you're seeing a static picture because my video is not working. But I can get with Mike and here, here, Mike just is off opening the video now. Still saying, okay. Maybe now it's trying to get the video and now I'm just blank. But I, I'd like to show Mike the two screenshots that I got where I had to do a special login and maybe that'll mean something to him.
Okay, well, I'll give, if you don't mind, I'll give Mike your number and maybe you guys can just converse over the telephone about it. Okay?
Perfect. Yes. Regarding my report, it's, um, pretty straightforward and no, Chief, I don't have anything that needs board attention in the meeting on Tuesday. This is just an update of some things that have been going on, some things in the background. We're just beginning now to work on a Rotary Grant request. And we're also beginning to work on some plans for a, a, a single play pickleball wall that would go out at the municipal park. So just some things going on behind the scenes, but nothing requiring board activity at this time, unless you have any questions for me.
I don't have any questions. I do, there is a comment there that Resident Susan Overstreet has purchased that Moby chair and intends to donate it to the township. And that, of course, obviously it'd be kept at Garris Township Park to go with the Moby mat that was put in for the handicap. And she is going to come Tuesday night to the meeting with, with her son and, and going to make that donation to us on Tuesday night. Just so you know.
Thank you.
Okay. Perfect. Any other board members have comments for Susan? Hearing none. We're going to hop over, text my gov. That's going to be a presentation. I, I told the fellow about ten o'clock based on our, our history of longer meetings. So when he gets in, wants to get in, Mike, we'll, we'll try and squeeze it in between. But we'll continue on the spirit of moving on. Number eight, budget adjustments or amendments. Excuse me, Jim, you want to do a quick brief or?
Yeah, basically quarterly or at least quarterly, somewhere in there, we should review where we're at, our budgets and make appropriate adjustments as needed. There's several in here and I'll just kind of talk in general. One, the planning commission did not originally have a budget line item set up for the master plan, which we, we had some windfall because the road projects this year were a little bit less than what they anticipated. It was above beyond the road millage apportionment that we get from the county. So we're moving some of that money over to the planning commission to pay for the master plan. The rest of these are, in that general fund are just housekeeping, we'll call it. The police fund received a grant for the Kohl's grant for the help pay for the training of the new officers. This, that twenty thousand dollar grant was not in the original budget. So we're increasing the revenue and increasing the expenses to offset that. Parks and Rec, just minor adjustments for the, pretty much for the money that comes, is left over to be paid out for the grant that was from the prior year. Cemetery, just picking up, adjusting for, you know, minor stuff like the insurance and repair and maintenance. Health of Higgins Lake, we moved, created a line on policy, community promotion, which is the monies that's being used for, like for the get together out here and some of the other area. Informational stuff. So it's just basically moving from office supply to community promotion. We're not increasing the budget. Marina, same thing, just a little bit of housekeeping and sanitation, again, adjusting between security and, and compost recycling. There is in here, there is no increase to the budget except for on the police fund, which is because of a new grant. So the rest of it's just moving between the existing accounts. Any questions?
Board members, any questions?
And I expect that we'll do this again.
Yes, we will.
In the next quarter. The idea here is that we won't have any huge adjustments. You know, at the end of the year, it should be no surprises.
Uh, since, since you put this together, there's a couple of changes that we need to, to make and Lynn just ran a new budget for me. It's in the, the ZBA legal notices. They've had like.
Oh, because, and we could, we could pick that up the next quarter. Those are, you're talking about just the meeting.
Yeah, like we're, we're going to, that's not going to get us, we'll still be on the hall.
We're at number eleven now coming up. There's one just got sent to me this morning. So you're at.
Yeah, well, what did you say? Four hundred and?
There were enough, there were one last year.
Negative four hundred that went today.
Are you talking about seven oh three oh one dash one? And halfway down that first.
No, that's their salary. That's, uh, the legal notices right below it, nine oh three dash oh.
So that's, that's the only one that's over?
That's the only one I know of right off the top. I mean, that, that was sticking out. I mean, I.
The record. When I did this, it was based on July thirty first. So, you know.
But we don't authorize this till the meeting. That's all I'm saying is that if we change it now, this.
Yeah, that's fine.
Yeah.
Do you want to increase it to what?
Well.
You have a number eleven. I just got it this morning. So there's another hearing. So it's going to require another Old Lake Resort.
Oh, another one.
Yes. Twenty-five dot eleven.
I think it should actually. Unfortunately, I think it should go up to at, at least like eight hundred.
So you want to change the eight oh five, nine oh three, that's currently two hundred to eight hundred?
Mm-hmm. Yeah. And we will have already, um, that will only leave like, uh, what? What in there? It's not going to leave a lot in there, but it'll leave a couple more.
Okay, so.
In the event Paul is busy.
What I'd be proposing then would change the two hundred in the legal notices to eight hundred and change the road and drains from thirty-three thousand to thirty-three thousand, six hundred on the credit.
That'll work.
That balances it out.
That'll work.
Thank you.
You're welcome. It'll work. We intend to approve those at Tuesday night's meeting. Any questions, board, on the amendments that are proposed? Okay, hearing done. We.
Thanks for doing the work, Jim.
It's now time to discuss again the sanitation. I call it the eight seventy-one line, but the sanitation piece where we have to discuss the, the assessment of that fee. And I know that Clerk and the Treasurer's Office have been working diligently on this. There's some moving targets on all of this in our minds in full transparency. Again, we're, we're, we're still waiting for a materials management plan that was mandated by the state of Michigan. The county took on the coordination to write the plan and they're writing it. In that materials management plan, it talks about, this occurred in twenty-three, I believe, when the law came in. Twenty-three, yeah, I think it was twenty-three, yeah, twenty-three, fall of twenty-three. And we've since been inspected at our compost site. We're doing fine on the permits and whatever. But ultimately, all eleven townships in the county are going to be covered by this materials management plan, which is going to mandate that, that each township has a, obviously a plan and also of what they're going to do for recycling, all that. We're sitting in a really good position and we have our compost, whatever. And from attending the, the initial meeting of the plan and discussions with the controller for the county and the commissioner that's, was heading up that plan, Rex Wilson, I, I'm not sure how some townships are going to be able to literally afford to create an entire infrastructure from that state law. So I'm anticipating that because we have these things, there's going to be an effort, ultimately, I think to have to contract with some townships that already have. Our site and Denton Township are two mature sites. Higgins, Higgins Township, I think, has one too. I'm not sure how mature it is, but.
It's actually, I don't think Higgins.
Or is it village?
The village took it over. Higgins dropped it.
Okay. So that being said, there, there, there might be opportunity here in the future to have people contract with us, which might allow us to gain some dollars in that end of it. And, you know, without knowing, and I don't want to put myself totally out there, but it would be nice if we could have other people's money paying for some of our stuff for sure. And then you back that assessment back, if you will, or, you know, to give something back to our people. That being said, we're not there today. Expenses for that site continue to go up. The sanitation and the compost, because they're all run out of that particular item. And so the two have been doing work. I'll turn that over to whoever, whatever wants to kick off the discussion. We, we were a month late last year getting things. We got it together. When I say late, late of our own processes. And so there's discussion, I know, to try and do this year in August. So that's done. So who wants to take it and run with it?
I can give you a very quick.
Very good. Thank you.
You know, currently you're at two hundred twenty-four dollars per year for all the services that we're getting. So which is your recycling every two weeks and your garbage pickup every week. And then to be able to operate the.
Leaf.
Yeah. Mulch and be able to drop off and take care of that. So we know that GFL is going to give, has a minimum as a three percent increase per year for the next, I think he agreed to three years more or two.
Well, I've yet to get the contract from them. The initial contract was, was, I believe, five years. And so I don't, I don't, I think we might get a five-year, three percent. I, I think I'm, I'm, did, did you feel that way, Jim? You met with me with it. Yeah.
So we don't have a written contract at this point, but we verbally know that it's going to go up three percent. The cost to operate this is estimated, I think, and Michelle went through it. She basically took last year's numbers and kind of bare bones came up with what it would take to run it. Using that, you're looking at about two thirty-one to break even from operations with what we know. Okay. Now, a four percent increase on, you know, this basically comes out to about a three percent increase, a four percent increase puts you at like two thirty, two, two thirty-three, two, five percent puts you at two thirty-five. We know most likely we're going to have some infrastructure out here that we're going to change next spring. This village will be falling in that year, because this is where we're talking about is.
Yes.
What we levy in December and spend come, start in April of two thousand twenty-six. So as of right now, our budget at two twenty-four is based on a break even to get us through March thirty-first of two thousand twenty-six. So at a minimum, you'd need two thirty-one just to break even based on what we, the things we know. I, my, my feeling is, is that I hate to keep coming back every year and try to raise this. I know that at two, two thirty-one, you're.
Won't be good enough.
You're like, you know, you're at seven dollar per year increase. Yet, you know, at two thirty-five, you're at eleven dollar increase. But at two thirty-five, there's a good chance we won't have to come back and ask for additional money next year. Depending on what we do out here, because if we end up doing an infrastructure change out here, there's a good chance there's going to be a new road going around the other side of the police department to get into that, that. And I don't know what the costs are to, to renovate that if the state mandates whatever it is they're going to do. Because I, those are unknown numbers. Those, it most likely will occur during two thousand twenty-six, or at least with the start of it. I expect this winter we'll start getting the mandates and then probably timelines will fall into the next operational year. So you can either try to be a little proactive and, and move it up and bank that money. So you've got it to use for, I mean, the difference between two thirty-one and two thirty-five generates only about thirteen thousand, five hundred dollars more to the, to the fund.
Eight seventy-one.
That's all it's, that's all you're, you're taking, there's thirty-three hundred and I say ninety parcels at four dollars parcels thirteen thousand, five hundred sixty dollars, I think.
How much, how much generated that? What percentage? One percent?
Well, the difference at five percent increase puts you at two thirty-five.
Right, but that's what generated, two thirty-five is what generates thirteen thousand, five hundred dollars.
More than what's in here right now. Yeah, that, the difference between two, two thirty-one is your minimum. You gotta go there. That's, so, you know, four dollar difference, two thirty-five, which could generate about thirteen thousand, five hundred bucks. You know, so but at a minimum, I, you know, I looked at what Michelle had put together. I, I don't have any disagreement with
I don't either.
The bare minimum numbers that are there, but it doesn't, that's what it is, is no, no chance for.
No, no gate breaking or, you know, big, big.
There's some maintenance stuff.
There's some, but.
But if you have to.
Major.
If we have to do any sort of infrastructural change. If we have to do any sort of infrastructural change there, that is not contemplated in this at two thirty-one.
No.
So that, that's.
Right, any expansion of that country, if we have to expand a little bit in the site.
Exactly.
If there's other.
But even at four dollars, you're only.
I'm not willing to do it.
It's not much.
You're only generating fifteen thousand five hundred dollars more. Uh, you know, and the only people that tend to complain about the price of the garbage pickup are those that are seasonal or don't, you know, are not here. I think anybody like myself that has, you know, that lives here year-round for two hundred twenty-four dollars.
You have a great service.
Recycling every other week and garbage pickup and have this facility right here. It's a pretty good deal, you know, uh, but it averages out. So some of those people that aren't here year-round are, you know, subsidizing the, the cost. But, um, that's, that's where we're at. And it's, you know, my guess is, or recommendation would be somewhere up to two thirty-five, if definitely at least two thirty-one, if you come up with it. Because that two thirty-one is three percent increase from two twenty-four. And that right there is exactly what the garbage, which makes up most of the cost that we incur. We know that's a three percent increase.
I think we need to take it to two thirty-five. I don't think you want to go any more than that at this point.
Well, now, I, I mean, again, the, the unknown is what you, what you don't know, and I don't, I don't like, I don't want to get too far out taxing people on an unknown. But on the same token, I do know it's coming, you know, this, this plan. And, uh, it's, it's, uh, it's a state law, but.
It's, yeah, we're not going to have a choice.
You know, once again, call it what you want, another unfunded mandate, in my opinion, but, and on the same token, it is what it is again. So anybody else have any comment there?
Yeah, I guess. We're, we're looking at, talking about this over three years, but there's contracts that are going to be due that are going to be up at the end of this next year.
Yep.
And the chances of those staying, I'm speculating, but the chances of those staying, that those numbers, I think, are slim. There's a good chance those contracts will go.
I put in a four percent increase on those. I, that's what that four percent increase.
That's good. I mean, I agree.
That's all I could do was gas up.
Thing is, I think that, the con- I think that contract hasn't been just afraid to do it for more than multiple years.
Exact, yeah, we're looking at just.
I think this.
Here at this point.
Yeah, I think this, yeah, I think this year we need to, but at some point we could, I think once we know some things with the extension of contracts and we have a little bit clearer picture on the management plan, we could maybe go with an average of three years or something.
And I suggested that Michelle do the three-year rundown.
Yeah.
Just to, because we know that KFL's at three percent per year.
Yeah.
You know, um, because there was a.
Yeah, I don't think.
Discussion about, well, if you know it's going to be that three percent per year calculated, three years worth, set it high based on that, and then cover the whole three years, so you don't have to come back and ask for additional, uh, levy each year. You know, it's, it's a.
To do it, yeah.
Comes off the same amount of money, but you're not constantly coming back and changing it. But I, uh, I'm comfortable with two thirty-five. It's not, as you can see on that average, on the second year, it's still two dollars short per year. You know, right here.
Well, until we get more information, though, two thirty-five, um, sounds like it might be prudent at this point. We know there's some changes coming, just, I just don't know to what degree until it comes out in this plan and.
The unknown about this road coming in, or if this.
Right.
We do have this update, that's, that's probably a project all of its own.
It is.
We'll have to take a look at the funding for that.
Yep.
As it stands, or as it's presented, but that's nothing, that's not nothing, that's a, it's.
That's going to be significant.
That road, that's, that's a, it's a project.
Yeah, it is, it is.
And then put it in perspective too, is that, that, uh, that thirteen thousand dollars leeway, uh, budget that's seven hundred and eighty thousand isn't exactly a lot of.
It's not a lot of money laying in the account.
No, it's not. We do have some money in the carryover, but, you know, that's part of that cash flow that moves forwards.
Right. Okay, am I hearing a consensus? Uh, are you, are you willing to go to Tuesday night for a motion, um, type of thing for two thirty-five? Or do you need more discussion time? Do you need more time? Are you good?
Just one more.
Sure.
This compost site is wildly popular among a s- a small group of people, or a, it's not the whole township, obviously, that, that uses it. But those that do use it are ma- making sure that every leaf that's raked up in this township ends up on that pile and that off in the wood someplace. It's a, you know, it's a, it's a great service and we got to do what we can to make sure we keep it. There's a lot of people that don't use it, that, that pay for it. And I guess I was just noodling over the amount of money that goes into, out of the seven hundred and eighty thousand dollar at GFL budget, the amount that goes of their tax dollars that go into this compost site.
Don't forget, it's going to be mandated soon.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Again, we're, you've got to be thankful that we have that.
Yep.
Well, the infrastructure in- uh, investment was made. The question is, is how much infrastructure additional that you would need? And, and, you know, again, it's kind of a blind target at this point. I just don't know the answer, because it's going to take the reaction of what, you know, how ten other townships as to, you know, what they're going to do, um, whether or not, you know, eventually they're going to try and put that whole infrastructure together, whether they're going to try and contract services. And I don't imagine there's going to be one of those, yeah, we're just not going to do business with anybody. I imagine in a plan, it's going to, going to say, hey, we all, we all sharing the grief together. As you heard with the ambulance service, it's, it's becoming, uh, you know, I, I don't know what to say. So.
I'm good with, uh.
Two thirty-five.
For next year.
Yeah, for next year.
As long as we kind of keep the door open, our eyes open for the.
We have to look at it every year.
Changes, I think, yeah.
Yep, okay, very good. Then if, if, if I'm hearing that, we will carry that forward to Tuesday, um, at that proposed amount. Thank you. Uh, moving.
We're talking about taxpayer increase in monthly tax or their yearly tax for public trash. If you consider the first rentals to operate a business as far as trying to, you know, business rates as opposed to residential rates, if that's even possible. Because, to give you an example, like I, I've been told by my neighbor's lawyer that my neighbor's running a business, I'm not using key for business. I would assume businesses have a higher tax rate than the residential. So why would we look at these people, I assume we know who they are, probably have identified them. They identified themselves as business, why would we charge them business rates? Well, other than it's common trash, the other.
We do charge people extra, during this discussion, how is that okay, Doug?
Yeah, you can go ahead, sure, absolutely, everything's in the public here, I'm not hiding nothing.
Let's get contractors and others, we, they do charge a premium. I'm not sure it's the right premium, but they do get charged a premium for, um, being able to grab their commercially, uh, collected leaves at that site, so.
By FOB.
So we don't talk about commercial trash pickup, right? I don't think the.
What's that?
We don't, we, commercial enterprises don't.
Yeah, the answer's no. Yeah, I mean, the answer's no, it hasn't been looked at, but I think it's an interesting point. I do.
Well, the, the, uh, ordinance that is being proposed, that's currently, that we're going to talk about later, it does address the excess trash that may be accumulated from those businesses or enterprises or whatever you want to call them. They'll be responsible for their trash above and beyond the normal pickup. So if somebody's renting a place out, they can't leave their trash bin sitting by the road, that's the way it's written. They're going to have to have somebody take the trash out on that Monday. Uh, which, so if they're renting that place out and it's accumulating more than that, they'll be responsible to take care of that on their own. That's kind of how it's.
It's a good question. I don't think this was ever separated out between, um, business parcels ahead, uh, residential parcels, par- uh, parcels, this is a per parcel.
Yeah.
Yeah. Good, uh, thank you, Ed. In the back? Speak up if you're, you're, because you're way to back. Okay. Thank you for your comment. Board? We're good? Moving on, like. Do we have both those people's names?
Uh, are you Ashley? Ashley Pratt?
Sir, your name for the.
Please.
And first name again?
Thank you.
Okay, and ma'am?
Yeah, she's Ashley.
Oh, yeah, saw you on the Zoom one. Yeah. Thank you. Okay, very good, thank you. Thank you, um, I, okay, we're on to number ten then. Um, and, uh, short-term rental ordinance discussion and process moving forward. I only put this on there is, uh, there's, there's nothing new to report. Um, after our last session that we had, um, we sent our, our, uh, that version of the ordinance document, if you will, to our attorney. You know, Treasurer Anderson and myself, uh, have an appointment August twenty-eighth to review his review, if you will, of that. Um, and what, what we're, what we're aspiring to do is to get something. We still have questions, Jim and I, since it's sent, we've, and, and the board had, we still have questions. Um, you know, people have brought it, uh, brought or met with us individually. And, uh, you know, it's, it's one of those things, you know, when you, when you're making legislative processes, you, you, you try and, uh, you try and not create unintended consequences. Um, as we all know, they happen. Um, and, you know, we just have to keep in mind moving forward with anything that we do. Things are always amendable moving forward, but I'm trying to get a base document that then will, we, we go to our required public hearing and maybe we'll do two, I don't know. Uh, and then, of course, once the board would vote on something, it then has to go to a paper and for thirty days in the paper, there's statutory requirements. So there's really not a lot to update, um, on that. I just put it here so that the public knew where we were at as a board. Um, and, uh, I can't get, uh, quicker, our attorney's on vacation. And, uh, so August twenty-eighth is the next time that we're going to be able to get, shall we say, a, a bite of the apple to ask our, ask some pertinent questions that even have developed, uh, since then. Um, and, uh, and, and moving forward. So that's kind of an update, um, for the public for that. Is there anything else the board would like to say about that? Okay.
There seems to be new information coming every day.
Daily.
Yeah.
I read a lot of articles.
Daily, and I want to do, I want us to do our due diligence, I, you know, too much, too much. There's, there's too much moving too fast and being impetuous, uh, that doesn't, doesn't work out well in this. Um, and as I seen my, in my years with, uh, on the legislative committees for, for our State Chiefs Association there, when you move impetuously, you get errors and unintended consequences happen, so. Uh, sir, you had a comment? Uh, it, it will be once the attorney is got what he needs involved in there. Uh, because we really need to start getting formal with the if, and, does, and buts, uh, and the shaws and the mays and those kinds of things, um, before we move forward. That, that document that you referred to, where these documents are being written in-house as, um, in a, in a, in as best a fashion as we can without being an attorney. Um, and doing, and doing that thing. So it, it will be available, uh, shortly, once the attorney has his view of that. Yeah. Yeah, it's an ordinance, it's, it's actually called draft A dot three. Um, it's in an attorney-client mode right now with, with that piece. Uh, everybody else probably has A dot two, uh, out there publicly. Um, and, uh, that, that A dot two was never taken in, the ones and twos were just bannered about here, if you will, in our, in our non, uh, attorney fashion, so. Sure. Yeah.
They, they, I know that, that two or three years ago, Cravers City made a couple of ordinances and, I mean, everybody got to be their own, the one that had living next door, we went to.
Yep.
Um, I noticed that the one thing that I really liked, and I don't know whether that is interesting enough, is I think one of their, their new orders was that a rental home homes should not be any closer than a thousand feet apart. And so we have, well, we have a rental home and I have to say, we live on one side and seven of them are on the other.
Mm-hmm.
First year we had a whole.
Yep, I'm familiar.
Um, we, we also have, I mean, the other side of hotels, we have elderly people who own those homes. Where family that, that they want them, they will be up sale. And so we're living in a situation where.
Perfect.
We have a rental home, I, I like.
Right.
Yeah, uh, we all basically have pretty small pockets. And, you know, so we would appreciate something in there where maybe you thought about limiting how close they could be together, so that, you know, because if we do that, then we're proud of ourselves, which is going to be done even more.
We understand. Thank you. Uh, your first and last name, ma'am? Joel, um, did you catch first name?
Judy.
Okay. I'm hearing challenge, uh, Kevin.
Your, your.
Yep.
I own property in Scott, I'm a resident of Scott.
Yep.
I'm wearing all this, uh, furrows. And that's equal to short law. Two years ago, there were two rentals between, on that, on that block, these are properties. Today, there's at least five.
Yeah.
This problem is best for anybody.
Oh, yes. Ashley, I think you had something else? You can, if you would like, that would be fine, or, or just holler out, I, apparently I'm the only one that. Okay. Yeah, thank you. If you're reading from something there, if you want to give that to the clerk, we can put it in with our records of the discussion. It would be good. Thank you. Okay, board, anything further um on that?
I guess the only comment I got is that, you know, uh, we did address the thousand-foot thing. I saw that in Traverse City and we included it in our draft. Whether that stays in the draft, I can't tell you because I've been reminded, because I'm not a lake fronter, that there's it could be 20 properties between 1,000 feet and that may be an overreach, which I guess we'll work through that. Um, but if you look around the state, um, there's from one end of the spectrum to the other, from the point of not doing anything to the point of being completely abolishing short-term rentals. There's not much guidance from the state. Um, there's been some court cases recently that have helped define what uh, commercial property might be considered as far as a short-term rental. But it's uh, it's right now, it's like the Wild West Show. You don't know, you know, every township you go into is different. And so from my perspective, I, I want to do this in the most fair way as possible. Uh, and be as respectful as we can to the people that live here. I live in a very secluded area. I bought it that way because I don't like to see my neighbors love them, but I don't want to see them. Tim can attest to that. He's one of my neighbors down the road, but only at the mailbox will he see me. So, um, I, how this gonna shake down? I'm not exactly sure, but uh, I, I know that this board is committed to doing the best we can and try to represent everybody as a whole. But if you look around, you look at what happened just recently in Lake Township and I'm not even sure what they're doing. They wanted to put it to a vote of the people and it got turned down and I'm not sure if they're where they're at. And Markey has a, an ordinance, which they just increased their number of allowed rentals by 10.
By 10.
In, in that township. Uh, but if you look around some of the other ones in this county, there's, I don't think they're doing anything. So, um, we, we might be on the forefront as far as what we're instituting. And that, as Brian indicated, that may lead to uh, if we move too fast, it may lead to mistakes and uh, somebody's not going to be happy. But you know, the idea is we're going to try to make everybody's as, as, as happy as we can.
Okay. Your one last comment. Go ahead, ma'am. That's great. Uh huh, yep.
One other thing that Traverse City was, and sounds like maybe they did limit the number of licenses they were going to give out per year. So that's all that will probably come. You know, it's a difficult situation. But you know, I have a passion to um, you know, some people, you can grab a field for their home.
Yep.
I just, okay. And our nice road that we have, we've had a whole bunch of rentals, you know, because we already have that texture, you know, somebody grabbing it, bringing in a whole lot of.
Yep.
Um, cars that were parked, you know, in your area and were, you know.
Uh huh.
One day, uh, one, one year, he had our rental that he had three rentals that both, they both up.
Uh huh. Uh huh.
He said, oh, the night was hard, like that, that was a long shot, but it's worth it. You know, so they ended up calling.
Yep.
But you know, it's hard, it's hard.
Appreciate that.
I here. Um, so part of the time I've been on the night.
Yep. Yep. Understand. Okay, I'm gonna suggest that we take, uh, Kyle from, uh, Text My Gov uh is out there on Zoom. I'm gonna uh, just so we're making sure that we give these time to kind of sync together, Mike and Kyle. Take it, we're gonna take just a quick five-minute break here uh, so that the technology can be where it needs to be and a bathroom break if anybody needs it. And then we'll come back. So I'm gonna suggest we take in a German at 10 o'clock. Be back at 10:05.
Can you hear me? Thank you. You should be able to share your screen.
Nice to finally meet you.
Thank you guys. Should we come back in? You're welcome down. Meet yourself. Um, Brian will call you up and uh, you can introduce yourself and then go through your spiel.
I missed that meeting. Uh, thank you. Nice to put a face with a name.
Give your presentation up if you want. I might be having uh, one of my managers jump on and he might be the one to do the presentation. So he may need the co-host um capability. But if he doesn't jump on, I'm, I'm more than happy to um, do the presentation. Uh, yeah, if he needs, um, he'll have all the functions you have when he jumps on. Uh, so if he needs more, he can just let me know what he needs, but he'll be able to do share screen and do all of that as well.
Okay, that sounds good. What was your name again?
Mike.
Mike, thank you, Mike.
Yep, absolutely. Thanks, Cal.
Yep.
Here. I can't get much closer. I mean, I can.
Thanks for having me.
Not yet. Not yet. One minute. Are we good? Folks, can we uh, get, get, take our way back to the seats? We're about ready to go back in session again here. One-minute warning.
Yeah, absolutely, we will. And then we've got to get something we can get to a public hearing with. And then we can, even after a public hearing, that's what it's meant for. We'll come back again if we're out there.
Yeah.
All meetings back to order. Thank you. Uh, we are on, we're gonna go back to number seven. Kyle from Text My Gov is here for a brief presentation uh, with the board. Um, Kyle, well, excuse me, Luke, are you there? You know, you're there also, Luke. Think you're from that company too. Okay, Kyle. Hey, listen, the floor is yours and my understanding is, is you're going to be able to share what you need to do. Uh, board members, if you need to move around to, to look at that, feel free to move your chairs around to take a peek, whatever you like. All right, very well. The floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, guys. And yeah, I'll turn the time over to Luke, but I now understand that Brian, or the last time we had a Zoom call, I had some a little discrepancy with the time um, last time we met, and I apologize for not being on earlier. I did some research and I thought you guys were Eastern Standard Time Zone, so that's why we're on an hour late. So my, my apologies, guys. Absolutely user error on my part. Um, but yeah, we're still very happy to show you the program. Um, sorry for any inconvenience that I might have caused right there. Um, but yeah, I do have Luke on with me today and he's gonna show um, a little bit about Text My Gov and how it'd be helpful for the township as well um, with the communication needs. So I'll turn the time over to Luke now.
Thanks, everyone, for taking a few minutes and, and hearing about the program. I know just as brief introduction, I know we've been in conversation with Brian as well as Michelle over there at the Township to consider the smart texting solution. Um, so our goal uh, is just to make sure we, we make most of our time. Any questions that come up as well, feel free to, to ask so we can, we can take advantage of the, the time this, this morning. But if I share my screen, will everybody see that? Okay? Or what are the, what would the visual look like there?
Everyone will see that.
Okay, I'll go ahead and share my screen then. Um, to start out, so with Text My Gov, we introduced a two-way smart texting solution, which in hindsight, one of the ways being we can give the township mass text capabilities to be able to send out alerts to residents in a mass text format. So I know just in, in our previous discussions with Brian, we talked about using this for, for garbage items. If there's any office hours or closures coming up, parks and rec events and things like that as well. We know texting is just such a familiar way to, to communicate nowadays and so to help streamline the process and get the, yeah, residents kept up to date there. The other portion of our program is where we introduce a, an interactive side. So residents can text into a localized phone number that we would set up for the township. So it would be a nine eight nine area code. And this can be utilized to get any sort of automatic information uh, to report or submit um, information as well or issues. And then they could, they could get automatic responses there. So if you've got your cell phones handy, we'll have you try that out here in a few moments uh, as far as that, that, what that would look like from a resident's standpoint. On our end, uh, we allocate a project manager. So the web, the web-based backend that you guys would utilize is all, it, all we would need is an internet connection. So the project management team would help build that out for you. Um, to make sure you're, you're familiar with using the program. You can access it from a laptop or even from your cell phone. If it's, if it's something on the, the weekend, for example, you won't have to come into the township office to, to send out an alert. A big question we get is how do we get residents to know about the service? And so we do have a, a big investment to get the program adopted for the township and get this advertised to the residents. I'll pull over these guys and show you a little bit of, they've got a, a little widget pop-up on their website. I'll zoom in a little bit today. So they've got, you know, text SJC Township to that five-digit short code number to sign up. So for any residents that choose to receive alerts or visit the website, they get a little promotional um, pop-up, gives them instructions on how to sign up. And then this rotates as well. So you can see they've got a local phone number that they can, they can use to text in and ask questions, to report issues like trash issues, for example. Uh, as a part of that as well, we'll give you guys promotional flyers and then even look to import any sort of databases. So whether that's an internal database from your end or Text My Gov will also purchase and provide a database externally from a, from a local um, provider there. So um, I know I threw a lot of information at you guys at the start, but what question? So I know I threw a lot of information at you guys at the start, but what questions so far before I had you text in?
Go ahead. There's, there's no questions on this end yet.
Okay, perfect. I've got our, our presentation number pulled up here. So if you wanted to try texting in hi to this four three five number, it should kick back a little welcome message. And then I'll have you try our secondary example as well. But this will just show you how a resident would utilize the, the interactive side. Usually whenever we roll out the system, we'll, we'll start them by texting in.
Got a few board members doing it right now.
Perfect.
Board members, you okay? You can continue on. All right, very good.
Perfect. Once you get that there, it's going to walk them through a few options the resident can do at this point. We're going to go ahead and try trash issue for today. So if a resident needed to report or submit any information about a trash issue, that one is live, so you can go ahead and try that out. It's going to walk you through a few questions there. This can be as short or as lengthy as you'd like it to be. So all these questions are customizable. So whatever information you'd like the residents to walk through, we can interchange these.
Okay.
And once we got a few people submitting that, I'll show you where these requests go and how it's distributed there on the backend here as well as to.
Jim, are you having trouble? Are you an Android or an Apple? Apple? Okay, you are too, right? Number, are you in Mary Jo? Maybe dial the number again, Jim, try it. What's that? We could use this. Ouch. Go ahead and continue, Luke.
Okay, awesome. I see a few of those coming in, so I'll pull over my screen and show you where these texts go after they're submitted from the residents. So you'll see on my screen, we've got reports, every text sent back and forth is requ, is, um, is tracked in the backend here. So you can see the conversation that Michelle had, the address, as well as the inquiry or picture if they would submit it. What the system does is grab the whole conversation and then compile it. We can send out notifications to whoever is associated to the issue at a township level. So it helps, helps not only make it, make it more available to the residents, but hopefully in return, we're getting, you know, avoiding the phone call if need be, but getting this information directly to the official at the township to handle. And again, we use trash today, but this is, we can use this for any sort of issues or any, any situation where a resident would need to submit information there. Our other piece is going to be the push notification side. So we've got a few various groups to, for this. Again, we can keep this under one singular group or we can break it out depending on, again, we've got one for events. We can have one specific to trash alerts as well. How they would differentiate between the groups is by what keyword they text in. So it's, and then on the right-hand side is where we would push out the alert. So we would select the group and I'll just pretend this is, we'll just say trash will, will be delayed.
Jim, Tim, I, I, as, as I've been looking at these things, I kind of think of Health of Higgins Lake in the background in my mind as well. As a, this is a great communicative piece. As you know before, when I presented an app for the PD, ninety-four percent roughly are people are on their phones. And it's a more effective communication. That's why I've been kind of pursuing, looking at some options.
Yeah, one of the big challenges that the Communications Committee is having on Health of Higgins Lake is how they get ahold of people. They're, they're willing to try anything to, you know, get the message out to people and.
Yes, I think this could do that.
Yeah, yes. Kind of wish Sue was here, but we'll make sure she gets the information.
Great, thanks.
Is this the same company that the police department has?
No, the police department has an app. This is not an app. This is, literally would lay over the top of your website, face page, and then you opt into those things. And if you're, you know, if somebody was going to use it, let's just say the Health of Higgins Lake was going to use it. They could solicit that communication back and forth via that, and it tracks it in the background so that the record is there as well. Just literally anything that we do. I mean, I pick trash because it's a low hanging fruit. I call it the bane of my existence sometimes, you know, with somebody, you know, didn't get picked up and it's two o'clock. And, you know, sometimes the driver just had a bad day and it's four by the time he gets there. But we just constantly use a lot of administrative time back and forth trying to solve those issues. And I think this could really short circuit some of that. Ashley, you have a question? Luke, the question is, is could a response be, can response come back through via AI? Or is this, somebody would be definitely responding individually or can there be an automated response?
Yeah, yeah, great question, Ashley. So the, the system set up to where it picks up on what we call keywords, those are all linked to automatic responses we've, we're going to build out in the backend. So when you guys had texted in trash issue, we had a flow of questions pre-designated to, that was set up to where it's walked, walking the resident through the backend. Our goal is to automate most of these. Again, there's, there's going to be some, and if it doesn't pick up on keywords, the resident will still get a response, whether that be unrecognized, sorry, we didn't find a match. We can link them to the website or give them further instruction there. But our goal is to take any of the FAQs or the common questions and then make it, make that information available all through, through text automation.
Very good. Thank you. You can continue on your presentation, Luke.
I do have a quick question.
I'm sorry, maybe you have a question.
Um, so there, I got a, in my response bag, I got a phone number. Would that phone number be our township office number instead of the four three five number?
Correct.
I'm thinking, okay, just wanted to confirm.
Yeah, we can customize that unrecognized response. So we've had agencies ask to push them to the website or to give them instructions on how to, to contact a live representative. So it's, it's totally customizable there.
Maybe you're going to get to this, not, what's, what's the pricing and advertising and all that piece? Do you get to that or?
He, he's not going to get to that today. I just ask him to familiarize yourself with. We do have from, I do have from them, which I'll matriculate around to the board. If the board is serious about looking, I don't want to string companies along. If we're serious about.
That's good. That's, that's fine. That's great. What about the advertising piece? Is that?
That comes in your, that market kit that they will give you in within. If you are going to contract with them, they have a market, marketing kit and how to do that and also examples. Is that correct, Luke?
Correct. Yep. Yeah, we, we have a, a marketing kit like Brian had mentioned. It's included with the service. And then to, to answer, our, our pricing is based off of population. So I know it's been, it's been a few months at least since we've got Brian's up-to-date proposal. This was the most recent one that we'd sent. This was again, two, three months back. But we do have the, the pricing laid out to where we have the marketing kit included. And then we also, we didn't get to it yet, but we include a survey function as well. If, if ever you'd like to receive resident feedback, it's, it's conveniently through text. So we've got the, the, in total for, per year would be forty-seven fifty. There is a $2,000 setup to get the program implemented and get the backend built out with those responses. So first year in total would be that sixty-seven fifty and then years ongoing would be at that, that forty-seven fifty.
Very good. Thank you. Board members, there is a, there is a, it looks like this. It was in your little packet there. Just a minute. Let me show the face of it. There we go. Just, you can spend, you can spend some time with that. We'll talk offline. You know, one, one-on-one or something as to whether we're moving forward and then I can get back with you, TextMyGov folks. Luke, do you have more on your presentation or are you pretty well set?
Yeah, I think that's about it. That's, that's about everything we wanted to, to go over and take a few minutes today. So unless there were any other questions, we, we appreciate everyone's time this morning.
I, I appreciate it. I don't see any more questions out here. Kyle, maybe we can talk next week. Just give me a call.
Okay, I'll give you a call.
Very good, fellas. Thanks for tuning in with us and, and you're, actually, actually I'll bring you back. I, I did put you off from nine o'clock to ten because sometimes we don't know what we got going on the first hour. And I, I, you know, I don't know whether we're going to have a three-hour meeting or what, but trying to cut these back a bit. So it wasn't your fault. Thanks for taking the blame, but it wasn't.
I wish I didn't take the blame. But yeah, thank you, guys.
Have a good one.
All right, moving on.
Bye.
So are we going to come back to this at some point?
Yep.
Yeah, another board meeting or another meeting, yes.
Okay.
I can field, field any questions you might have and I can, you know.
Well, my, the first thing I was thinking over there was like, okay, if we create this new platform and we already have difficulty responding to all the emails we get every day, is somebody going to, how much more man-hours is it going to take to, to handle this? Is it going to replace, make us more efficient or we could add another layer of accuracy? That's my concern.
And this is what, like when I text in, it asked me for my name and then it asked me for my address of service. First I put in trash.
Well, I get it, but at some point they're going to get the automated thing and they're going to say, this isn't what I'm asking. And I'm going to want to know, I mean, the automated thing is like, you ask a question about the weather and then it starts giving you a whole bunch of other stuff, but that's maybe not what you wanted. So maybe that, this isn't just a question of whether trash is on Monday. The question or it's a comment, they drove by and didn't pick up my trash. Somebody's got to respond to that. Yeah, tough crap is probably.
In your request, items will be collected the next upcoming Tuesday or Thursday. If you have additional questions, then it would have our phone number.
Yeah, well, okay. That's, that'll satisfy them, right?
Okay, that, well, and, and I think that was, kind of goes to what Ash's question was is, is, you know, is AI going to respond to this or whatever it is? And, and of course, the build-out is the big deal, the way I look at it. Because I've seen this, I've seen this twice now from text.gov, one last year and prior to this, this board's being seated. And then of course, I brought it back this year because we just have a number of initiatives that we're, that we're engaged in. And, and I, this, this, the website on the backend with the contact forms is, is laborsome. And so certainly, I, I'm certainly looking at something that could, with the right amount of pre-build on it. It, you know, we can, I think we can make great strides with the text piece on that and satisfy lots of stuff on it. That's just my humble opinion, but let's move on. It wasn't meant to be laborious. It was meant for a demonstration today. We can, if you got other questions, let me know. I'll speak with Kyle. And, you know, my, my intent was is that we see it, we decide whether or not we're interested. Of course, this is, I'm not into big mid-budget year purchases or otherwise. So it would be, we start looking at expenses and next year's budget on April one. If it's something we're interested in, we got to, we could have to find a place to budgetarily place it for proper business, so. Okay, moving on to the Health of Higgins Lake update. Jim, anything you need to tell us?
Other than there's a lot of work going on and that might slow down maybe through the, each of the pieces there briefly. The Science Committee's got a, a big meeting coming up next week. They're scheduled for, I think, three or four hours to.
Move that over right next to you and up close. Is this the science technology? How am I going to do this other thing if I can't even keep the microphone?
Don't you love it?
I'll get your headset next month.
The Science Committee's got a, a big meeting coming up next week with all of their members and, and, and going to spend the full day, full afternoon on going through how they manage the, the reports that are out there and how they get those on the website and how they get them vetted and how they, you know, so people can understand them. But, but they're, they're working hard. They get a big group now. They got twenty-five-ish people on that committee that, that want to help out, added three or four more after the, the open house last week. So they're clipping right along. The Communications Committee, speaking of the open house, had an open house here last week and, and had about sixty people, citizens stop in. And from that group of people, there was a dozen or so that raised their hand, you know, get me on a committee someplace, which was, you know, well-attended and it was, it was well-done, so. The IT committee, it sounds like that should be something pretty simple, but they've got a lot of people to, to report to and to how they capture the, the information that all of the different committees are generating and how that all gets, you know, stored so they can get easily, easily accessed. That's still a work in progress, but they're making great strides. So things are coming along good there. The, the road committee has, the road ends committee has, has way out in front of most everybody else. They've got the group of their people going around to each of the road ends and updating the inventory and taking another look at it. I think an interesting part of what's going on there, in addition to the work they're doing strictly in Garrish, they're also trying to reach out to do work in Lyon, which was what we really want. We want these road ends all the way, this is a lake issue, all the way around the lake. And well, Tim's here and I'd be glad to let him weigh in, but I'll just try it that he's, he's reached out to the, to Lyon Township and with limited results and they're still moving forward. And there's another meeting coming up with the board to solicit a little more of their individual specific named people to, to help with exactly what they're doing in Garrish. So I think that's, every bit of that is a very positive thing for what we're doing. Like we've kind of talked all along, the road ends piece is kind of the one that's out front. We'll see, you know, marketable progress from that from, you know, earlier than a lot of the rest of the stuffs. The Septic Committee continues to meet. We've met here four times. And we are, have requested that the new director of the Central Michigan District Health Department and along with Senatorian Mark Jarski come to our next meeting. And we have an extended meeting to sit down and talk about how their fetch system will help us to get our arms around what's going on in the, in all the septics in the community. So, so that's moving along. I think that's all good progress too. And those, that work's being done in, in advance of, and, and ordinance. We're not, there's not been any drafting of any ordinance at this point. But, but that is certainly on the radar and we'll be working on that as we get more information about what the condition of septics are out there. I think in general, things are, are moving along. I'm, I'm wildly impressed with the people that we have and the way that those individuals are just, have taken off with each of their committees and their interface with the steering committee and, and how it's all coming together. Yeah, there's some, there's some bumps and some things that, you know, would, you might think, think would be, you know, moving along. But I, I couldn't put my finger on any of them frankly right now. So I think things are going good. I think that's it.
Very good. Thank you. I've got to hand the audience, Bill. Small check.
Over here.
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
Well, originally I, I kinda handed it off to, to Brad on the science committee, um, and as it's, as the effects of whatever happens with, with that effort, as it affects the actual, you know, the, the water quality felt like it landed in the science committee, um, more so than anyplace else. I think so. Brad's aware of it and, uh, and that it's still, at this point, it is, it is not this issue. We wanna stay advised of what's going on and and, um, we wanna know, know what that's all about, but, but, um, we don't have a dog in that hunt right at this moment, as far as, other than to understand what's going on and what it's all about.
Okay, thank you. All right, uh, any board members, any more questions, uh, Jim and Oliver, Health Higgins Lake? Very good. Thank you. Okay, we're number twelve. Uh, it's, the time has come. We have some expiring contracts with the electrical and the plumbing, uh, slash mechanical inspectors, the, uh, old documents who are put in there for you and Tuesday night, uh, we will need to, um, in order to get ahead of it, we will need to look at, and my understanding, both of them are interested again. Uh, Michelle, any other?
Didn't ask for any changes in their contracts other than, um, they both asked for two years versus three years, only because they're both of an age where you might think of retiring. I tried to get three out of them, but, so we'll have to change the verbiage in that, but otherwise it's real blessed to have them.
Creating that, that document for us. So for Tuesday night, we'll have two separate motions actually to, uh, prove that each of them for a two-year contract. I'm not aware of, uh, anybody, any real problems at all. Well, my.
Haven't heard anything either way, either, either one of them.
Okay.
Basically you're just gonna change the dates and update the contract and make it two-year.
Yep. Your contract for each one of them in separate motions on Tuesday for action. Okay. All right, uh, moving on to, uh, number thirteen, um, from the, uh, the last GLUA board meeting, um, that I know there was, uh, we were contacted, uh, uh, Bill Lamb, uh, felt his wife took a, a new position, which he thought maybe put him in some conflict uh, with the GLUA board and expressed an interest, uh, that to resign from that board. Uh, he has conveyed that, uh, in writing to the township. Um, and, uh, so this morning, or this morning, I just assumed, got right to it, um, that we, uh, we entertain a motion to accept, uh, Bill Lamb's resignation from the Garrish Line Utility Authority immediately. Uh, and obviously with, uh, with regret, Bill served very, very, uh, very, very diligently for us on that board. Thankful for his service. So I would entertain a motion to accept his resignation formally.
So moved.
Uh, thank you, trustee Ossling. Uh, do we have support? Supported by a almost voice, Mary Jo. Any further discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye, pose the same, uh, motion carries. Uh, Michelle, can you draft up a letter of thank you, uh, for him, uh, for his service. So, good man. And then of course, on the cusp of that as well, we received an application, or I shouldn't say an application, an interest to, to replace Mr. Lamb on the Garrish Line Utility Authority from Tom Kaiser. Uh, you all have got a copy of that as well, and I would entertain a motion at this time that we appoint Tom Kaiser to the Garrish Line Utility Authority, uh, to replace Bill Lamb. Moved by Treasurer Anderson, supported by.
Support.
Supported by trustee, uh, Ossling. Any further discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor, uh, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose the same, motion carries. Uh, I see Jim Barnwell in the audience and of course Phil Check as well, who are fellow serving members of the GLUA. So that you now know that your third member of Garrish Township becomes Tom Kaiser immediately. Uh, so please include him in any correspondence that you might have. And then Jim, I saw you in the hallway and, uh, you had indicated you do have a, a little bit of an update. So we'll certainly give you the floor. You wanna, come on up here and turn the mic on, will you?
You're kinda soft spoken. And so, yeah, I've dealt with him in the past, interactions with him, and I think he's a knowledgeable person. So he'll be a good addition, though hopefully only for a meeting or two. Uh, and then the other thing I wanted to come in because I knew you talked about GLUA, but, uh, shortly around nine o'clock, I did get a call from the attorney, uh, that we've just, uh, that our GLUA board wanted to have some input onto what we do with the, uh, funds, how we dis- distribute them. And, you know, they, he, she indicated it's his administrative assistant. Uh, she indicated that we will be getting a letter. They're working on a draft now and the final letter should be here next week. So I'm looking at having a meeting probably the week of the twentieth to finalize. Around that week.
Around that week.
Yeah, yeah. I'm hoping to, uh, Phil's indicated already. I asked him twentieth works for him. It works for me. I've talked to Tim Monet the other day, what days are best for him? And that's a Wednesday. That works good for him. So.
So you're getting some kind of a letter of recommendation about what to do with that?
And not a recommendation, what to do with it. It was, I, but their question was is, are there any restrictions or considerations to be made?
You're reviewing an opinion.
Yeah, an opinion as to, you know, I, we didn't wanna do something that was illegal and also consistent with our, um, Articles of Incorporation, our purpose and our bylaws.
Okay.
And we felt we should be consistent with that and, and not have, uh, you know, something come back and rear. It's ugly.
That, that letter came back from the, uh, from Lyons Board, from Lyons Attorney?
No, it's attorney we chose.
So you have.
I don't have the letter. Yeah, we have a separate contract.
Is that the, is that the one from, from the authority, from the Higgins Lake Authority?
Yeah, the, he also is on theirs. And I know, uh, Brian Cook said that there, they'd would not accept the money anyway, but don't intend to give it to them. So, and I thought he was familiar with, um, authorities.
Authority.
Okay.
It'll be just a record, you know, what we can and cannot do.
Yeah, okay.
The thing is, is that the law's gonna tell you this.
Yeah.
But what's right?
Right.
Righteous is more like right here.
That's more.
That's where you guys gotta come.
That's where we have to come together and decide what is consistent with our purpose, our Articles of Incorporation, fair and, you know, and go move forward.
Yeah.
So, and so hopefully we can get that done on the twentieth. Do you made any proposals to, um, to the attorney as to what you wanna do with it or?
No, I think he's, he's got the first volley. Guidelines and then I think we then have to, you know, decide amongst ourselves. I don't, I feel we are representing GLUA, we are representing the tow townships. We should make that decision, not an outside attorney making the decision of what we can do. Just tell us what we can't do and what, what framework we have to work within.
That's correct. It, it, we would as your boards should be making a decision, but, uh, it needs to happen soon.
I hope then, uh.
And if it, it, but otherwise, uh, we, we, we can't, we won't be able to continue on in a, in what I'll call a stalemate fashion. So I'll make that perfectly clear.
Okay, I think everybody.
The law will ultimately determine what happens and I hope we don't have to go there.
Most, the majority of the board wants to get this over.
I, okay, very good. Thanks. I appreciate it. Okay, that's the end of the agenda. We're now on to a, well, you, you can now cause they're on to public comment. We made it very clear, uh, several months ago. I don't know whether Ben conveyed you or not, but, uh, the, our township attorney will pick up the filing of the proper paperworks and all the rest of that and work with, uh, at the last meeting that had, was had, um, or discussion was had with, uh, Lyon Township's attorney. Our two attorneys were work, would work together towards a proper closure of that at the, at the state level, uh, and work that out. Um, and not having it to have necessarily, uh, come out of your, uh, your proceeds to whatever you do. I, I just, I don't, uh, we just can't keep continuing to be open to pay for a next move here. Um, it needs to, it needs to go, uh, and, and, and so that our, our messages, uh, get very clear uh, to the community and, and, and so we're just looking for, uh, a, a resolution to it. And so, yeah, absolutely. The minute I know what you folks are doing and you, you do what you gotta do, we'll notify our attorney to take the proper, next proper steps to close that out properly with the, uh, with the, uh, the proper authorities. Okay. Okay, public comment? Anything else? On anything actually, public comment? Okay, uh, on the, uh, board comments, uh, Mary Jo.
None, thanks.
Michelle. Jim Anderson.
Tax collections are going on schedule and, uh, nothing, no hiccups. So we're, we're, we're going along well.
Yeah, um, I went to the, uh, public hearing last night that the county put on for the special assessment district that they're considering, uh, surrounding the dam, the Lakefront Special Assessment District. I don't pretend to know the details at any depth about that whole project, but I did wanna go and listen into the, to the comments, see what people had to say and, um, my takeaway was it was, it was a pretty good meeting. There was, there was some contention, no doubt. There's strong opinions about, uh, about this sad and, and how the county's going about it and, um, so like I said before, I don't think we are in a position to weigh into this. We haven't been asked to. I don't think we, we need to keep an eye on what, you know, what's going on and stay informed the best we can, but, uh, but as far as us getting involved, they're not asking us to and it's, it's a county issue. And, um, as it affects the overall health of the lake, I think that's something and whatever the solutions might be, and they're not even talking about solutions right now. They're, they're just working on what is the, what is the special assessment district? The purpose of this meeting was to take comments about, uh, my parcel should not be included in this because for whatever reason or this piece should be involved. One of the things that came up, this sort of, that I was open, that I was a little surprised at was um, a gentleman talked about the number of the eighty road ends that are around the lake and the, he said, uh, his number, I think was that represents five percent of the overall lake property and, uh, that should represent then at least five percent of the overall revenue that needs to be generated from this upcoming sad and, and it doesn't look like the like the county has taken that into, into consideration. You know, all of the people that use those road ends, um, benefit or are deterred by what their eventual solution might be. So they do have a, they do have a, a stake in it and, um, you wouldn't think, I guess the fact that people use a half a dozen road ends to launch boats and anything, you know, that's one thing, but all of these road ends that get people to come down and use them and the effect of whatever they do on it is, was kind of interesting.
Um, so they're essentially exempting themselves from a tax or no?
No, I don't think so. I don't think that's the case. They're, they're only saying that the number, that the amount, the value that they've placed on those road ends, this gentleman said, though, that doesn't appropriately represent the use that that's, that they generate or that they, um, they put into the system. So it's something they're addressing.
They are calculated in that.
Yeah, they are.
So he's just saying they should skew it heavier.
Yeah, yeah.
Road ends because of their, their use of them.
I see, we're gonna. Testing the, uh, the value that's put to it or the amount that's put to it.
I, I do have a, did they indicate that they are looking to put this on the tax roll this year? Before December?
No. Is that a yes from the audience?
Well, they did indicate that. Cause their ta- their ti- timeline to be able to do that is rapidly approached.
Yeah. There's another public hearing in September.
September second.
September twelve?
Second. At the high school.
That seems like that's closing in pretty quick on.
Well, the L forty twenty-nine, which is the form you have to submit to have that on the tax roll is due October something, I think.
Yep.
That's why we've gotta get ours taken care of with the special assessments that.
Yes.
Next month.
Yep.
So, yeah, uh, just from a practical standpoint, you know, cause I've gotta put that on our roll. If, if that's, if that's the case.
It's.
There's contention that, um, sorry.
Go ahead.
That, um, well, two things, that, that, the state's involvement and the, this, the state has a huge piece of, of this overall thing and the equity between their piece of it and the rest of the properties, um, Garrish Townships has got like, assess something like twenty-six thousand dollars would be the assessment to come to Garrish for our properties that are in, involved in it. Um, and I guess to that extent, we probably need to keep a closer eye on what this is all about to be sure that we're okay with it. So, um, you and I need to talk about it and see who, who chases that and, and we're, make sure that we're okay with whatever that is. But the one other thing that I wanted to mention was that, um, that, uh, Mary Jo and I were there from, from Garrish coincidentally and, and a gentleman asked, um, who was there from Lyon? Turns out nobody from Lyon attended this public hearing. And, um, that didn't go unnoticed either. So, um, I thought it was kinda interesting. I can't.
One of the things on the September second, they feel they'll have all the numbers that you're asking about. Yeah, the.
Yeah, that, that's right. They, you, you have, there's a, there's a drop dead date for making comments about it and and it's before that September second hearing, you get, you gotta, if you have a, wanna contend your, or contest your assessment, you gotta do it before, some date before that. So they can get that incorporated before the September second meetings. Okay. Gotcha. Yeah, that makes sense. Yeah.
Well, thank you. Appreciate that. Um, I always appreciated Lehman's, uh, version of what, uh, goes on with some of this stuff. Um, obviously there was a court case as well, I believe, in the sixth or whatever. And that were, arguments were heard and, um, I, it could be what, ninety days maybe before you hear something, sixty or you just don't know. Yeah, okay. All right, very good. Um, so is that it for you, Jim, for your board comment? Okay. Uh, so on, uh, for me, a board comment, uh, two things. A reminder, a reminder, a reminder and again, that tomorrow, the general township complex will be closed. We are having all of the maintenance work done for the crack seal, seal coating, uh, re- relining, uh, of our township parking lot. Um, there's supposed to be two crews here, uh, trying to get it done, obviously as quick as possible, but the longer we stay off it or the better off it'll be for, uh, so overnight anyways. Uh, next, uh, and that's gonna include yours, there's no access to the compost site. There's, uh, the, the essential services will be here, uh, police and fire EMS. Um, they're gonna, I guess, park across the street at the toy box, thankful for the owner there and they can walk across to their, to their areas, um, and, uh, and, but they've also advertised out there that, you know, administratively, it's, um, it's gonna be difficult. It can't run through the ditch. Uh, then also just, uh, calling attention to you, cause it kinda gets lost in the mixture. We, for the board, August twelfth, which is next Tuesday, we have a pub, the second public hearing. Uh, police, fire, EMS budgets, one at six, one at six thirty. And then of course our immediately following is our regular meeting at seven o'clock. Uh, on those, uh, so we'll, we'll get another bite of that apple, um, as well if, if it's needed. Um, that's really all I had, other than the act now, well, golf outing you had mentioned. So Jim, may I see you open something up and say, oops, I forgot.
Sorry. Okay. Meant to just mention to the board. Sorry, I meant to just mention to the board that, um, with regard to the cemetery, we've talked about the expansion of the cemetery, proposed future expansion, not to be staked or anything now. And then the, uh, the additional lots that have been added and they're staked. And the maps they've been using are from 1964, I think. I don't know whenever they, but they're all falling apart. So I went ahead and created a new map and I had this printed as a working map. And this is something like what it looks like. And I went up there yesterday to get the final one printed and their printer was broke. So, um, in any case, the, the maps are, the drawings are being updated. And, um, will be handed over to the staff to use going forward to, uh, to keep track of the.
Perfect.
There's a DNR grant that's out there right now. It's a match grant and it's for, uh, trees. Uh, for, it's a, you know, we, we buy a tree, they buy a tree, up to $4,000. Is that something that we would be interested in for the cemetery piece?
Well, the budgetary thing I threw out a couple of weeks ago was like four grand for trees over there was, was sort of proposing. So if there's a way to, uh.
Get some funds for it?
Yeah, that'd be, if, if it's available for something like that, yeah.
Yeah, well, yeah, under our parks plan.
Okay, very good. How about there's not a park?
People walk through it. Yeah.
Is it, do we consider that part of the park?
We do now.
It's your last, your last walking park.
It's our last walking?
It's your last walk.
Well, you're kind of loaded with it, aren't you?
It was recommended to do that so that you could.
Okay, well, you guys want to research that then and if you need any help, like, whatever.
No.
Okay, very good. Um, I think that brings us to the end of our, uh, agenda today there. And, uh, in almost a record since I've been here, um, we, uh, we'd entertain a motion to adjourn this meeting at 10:52.
So moved.
Moved by Treasurer Anderson. Any support?
Support.
Support by trustee Ossling. Any further discussion? Not hearing any. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose the same, the motion carried. Thank you all for joining us this morning.